All this meeting to order today for the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in Lyon County Administrative Complex. Today on our agenda, action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted, no action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. And to avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, then any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. The Board of County Commissioners convenes as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, the Central Lyon Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And that we may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. At a roll call, all five commissioners are in chambers. An invocation will be given by Irene Albrighton of First Christian Church. If you'll arise, please.
Any other?
Okay, I think, am I unmuted?
No.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Irene.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Please join me for our invocation. To God, we ask your blessing on this meeting and on all gathered and entrusted with positions that they hold. We ask that you bless their work together in times of unity and in times of disagreement. We ask a special blessing on the commissioners as they work with the issues of flooding and other weather-related concerns of Lyon County. May this work be meaningful for them and for the people they are elected to serve. And when this meeting is over, please grant them safe travels to their home. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendricks, you will please read us some.
Be seated. Public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion. Pardon me, after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. Do we have any public comment? Okay, Mr. Denning.
My name is Jim Denning. My wife and I live at One Real Vista in Yarrington. Our problem out there is drug dealers, traffic, and what goes along with that. We started living out there in two thousand and eighteen and nothing really got done up until about two months ago. And it's quieted down somewhat now, but the illegal activity is still ongoing. Our laws, so I'm told, are not sufficient enough to take care of this. We need to get better laws and enact them, but we need to execute the laws that we do have to take care of this problem. The other thing is deferred bail. I understand that these guys go in, the next morning they let them out. It's deferred. I think these people are getting deferred bail. They should agree to come in and be drug tested and do drug counseling, drug testing at least three times a week, counseling. You know, mandatory. Code enforcement has done what they can do out there, but nothing has really changed. They do what they do. He goes to court. Afterwards, it's all done, forgotten, and he starts building up everything again. It's still a mess, continues to be a mess. There was a fire out there. The house was red-tagged. And there's old trailers, a motorhome there that people are living in. We've got a lot of transients, a lot of traffic. I think that if they're going to allow him to do work, is what he's saying he's doing, it should be inspected on a monthly basis and notified of what progress. The other thing is, is the access streets are city, but the city police don't get involved with it unless the sheriff calls them. I think that something should be done to speak to the city about, hey, you know, we need patrols out there on that end of it, too. A police presence would help, and I know that it can't be out there twenty-four hours or that, but it could make a couple of tours through at random hours that keeps these guys' heads on a swivel, and they're not going to be able to organize. The number of calls on a monthly basis out there are about two a month at least. And that's post-prohibitive to have a deputy go out there, spend fifteen minutes up to an hour talking to these people. And as soon as they leave, here it comes around again. We've got to get some teeth into these laws. There's not supposed to be anybody living out there on the premises. The owner can live there, and he supposedly is living in a trailer. That we have people that are staying out there that we see on a daily basis. And somehow or other, we need to enforce our laws to take that away from them. There's also high school kids that are going out there. There's a lot of disruption in the neighborhood. A while back, we presented a petition or a request, and it'd be deemed a nuisance property.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Anybody online? Nope. Okay. Go on to item five for possible action, review and adoption of agenda. Commissioners input. I do have one myself. Nobody else? Okay, what I want to do is whenever the district attorney calls in, because he's not able to be here today, he's going to try to call in around ten o'clock. If that's the case, then we will move the following item after whatever we might be working on at ten o'clock. We'll move the item twenty-one A to around ten o'clock when he calls in. So that's what I'm requesting at this point. I can make a motion or ask for a motion?
Chairman Hockney, I'll move that we approve today's agenda, moving twenty-one A to as near to ten AM as possible.
Second. So I have a motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have any comment, public comment, if anybody wants to input to the agenda? Okay. And let's have a vote on that. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, we have five zero, and we do have a time certain for nine AM this morning. So we have a presentation and update only, General Manager Bert Bryan with Walker River Irrigation District to give a report on current and forecasted Walker River conditions. Bert, you're up.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner. I appreciate you guys having me here this morning. So my name is Bert Bryan. I'm the General Manager for Walker River Irrigation District. And for those of you that aren't familiar, the irrigation district is in an area of about two hundred and forty-six thousand acres, of which we have eighty-one thousand plus acres that are water-rated. The bulk of all of our, all of our water rights are within Lyon County, within the Smith and Mason Valley area. We are the largest per acre irrigation district in the state of Nevada. And our general feed from everything comes off the eastern Sierras. We own both the Bridgeport and Topaz Reservoir. And that's what, on the west side, or you have Topaz, and on the east side, you have Bridgeport, and then they converge here in Mason Valley. And then the main stem continues on here into shires to the Walker River Pirate Tribe, and then the terminus, obviously, at Walker Lake. So basically today, what I'd like to talk to you guys about is a brief overview on the current conditions with what we have within the snowpack, with what we're anticipating, also kind of touch upon the events that kind of occurred Friday flooding in Smith Valley and Saturday into Sunday flooding here in Mason Valleys and continuation of that flooding throughout the course of this year, this water year due to the high snowpack. So this is just a couple of images. The image on the left is an image of the Pitchfork Ranch or the State Park Lands that was the Pitchfork Ranch. That diversion there is actually right where we had a rock dam that we had removed. That fence line is what separates the property from the State Park Lands to the East Walker Road. And as you can see there, it's completely gone. The photograph to the right is the Smith Valley area on Day Lane. That, that remnants there is a private ditch right off the Plymouth that actually is headed back toward the river, toward the, the West Walker down over there. Basically, on Saturday, we had, or excuse me, Friday, we had a large event that kind of occurred. And a lot has been kind of brought to the district and everything else of concerns of the river. Unfortunately, all of the events that took place were not from your upper portion of the watershed. This was all snow driven on the low end for both Smith and Mason for the impacts. And just to give you guys an example of what we're still yet to anticipate, this is a breakdown for our April through July forecast. The sections are kind of broke into an east and a west. There is the ninety percent, which is a ninety percent certainty that those are going to occur. That's the dry end. The fifty percent is what we're kind of forecasting for, what we know to, to be based on the numbers that we have. And every time we get a storm, we trend closer and closer to the ten percent. So you can see here, the East Walker, right now at a fifty percent reading, we're, we're anticipating a flow volume between April to July of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand acre feet of water. And to put this into perspective, in two thousand and seventeen, that was the largest water year we had on record of the hundred-plus years that the district has been around. And during that, that period, we ran during the entire span from April to July, two hundred and eight thousand acre feet of water through the east side. But there is the potential for two hundred and thirty thousand acre feet of water to come with the continuation of the current atmospheric pattern that we're being in and the, the storm doors that have kind of presented themselves with our region. The same is pretty consistent with the west side near Cobville. We're, we're still projecting with that fifty percent median, which would put us at about three hundred and eighty-four thousand acre feet of water during that span. During two thousand and seventeen, we pushed four hundred and six thousand acre feet of water. Again, we are still trending wetter than that, and if we continue to go toward the ten percent, that would take us at four hundred and thirty. So that would, that would be all-time records in terms of the volumetric amount of water that passed through the Walker River system itself during that April to July timeframe, which is our peak runoff time. This is a breakdown of previous water years and how they kind of broke down from the east side through Bridgeport. And you can see the, the bar to the far right is our current projection for this water year. Obviously, the one to the left a little bit is two thousand and seventeen. It's, it's slightly above where we're at. And then the, the, the one thing that really kind of sticks out is that everything else is pretty much dwarfed in comparison from that side. At its current juncture, we're still at about three hundred and ten percent of average for the date, just on the east side alone. The thing that is concerning is that Bridgeport is your traditional style dam where all of the tributaries and the East Walker flow into it, but there's only one point out. And that is at the dam through the discharge tube. There is safety siphons that are there, but the last thing we'd like to do is spill, because if we have spill, we could definitely see some significant problems throughout the county. This one is one of the West Walker, giving you a comparison to previous water years, much like the, the east side. You could see that the, the red bar that we're currently in is just shy of the, the record of two thousand and seventeen. But again, these are based on the numbers that are current as of yesterday afternoon. We, we do have another storm system that's tracking to, to approach us on Sunday and through next week. But we'll be monitoring to see how that kind of adjusts everything. This is a projection of your snowwater equivalent. So basically, the way that they track the amount of water that's going to come in, it's not just knowing the amount of snow. There's a measurement of the actual volume of water that's within the pack. Now, the black line is our current juncture. All the other shaded, different color areas below are previous years. And then this is basically the probability curve of what or how that snow will peel off. In the best-case scenario, we would be more in line with depleting the snowpack by some point in July. And the worst conditions, we won't deplete the entire snowpack until sometime in September. To give you guys perspective, we, we went off of flood operations in two thousand and seventeen, the first week in August. So this could extend to a longer period of time. This is the basin-wide average of all of those ridges where we have the snow tell sites, giving you an indication of the soil moisture. When, when the snow tends to melt, it breaks off, the more moisture within the soil, the more efficient the runoff is, meaning that it's going to collect a higher volume down into the lower valleys and then back into our system. The green line that's in the middle is the average. So you can see we're above average, but we're not at record levels at this time. The one benefit that we have had from this winter is that we've been significantly cold for a long period of time. This is a picture of the Flying M, and that is the river now on the East Walker as a result of the high flow that kind of took place. We, in, over the course of time from the USGS records, the Stroh-Snyder Gauge that's on the East Walker that's in between the Walker River Land Core Groups and right upstream of the Pitchfork Ranch. The ultimate record was back in nineteen ninety-seven during the five-hundred-year flood. We encompassed two thousand three hundred and fifty CFS at the time. The gauge stopped working on the event on Saturday night at about two thousand six hundred. So we broke a new record there. And again, this was all based not necessarily on the district releases at the reservoir at Bridgeport. This was all mid-to-low level snow below the dam that caused the amount of water that came through. The one added benefit that, you know, it is unfortunate that a lot of these properties did flood on the Upper East and coming into Mason Valley. Had they not, we would have hit major, major flood stage, and you would have seen water here in Yarrington. So that, that's something to kind of keep in the perspective. We, we do have the potential for a much more significant event if we're unfortunate and the weather doesn't cooperate with where we're at. At this point, we're trying to avoid something like that from occurring, but thankfully, a lot of the uninhabited lands were, were flooded, and it didn't necessarily hit within the, the town of Yarrington. This is a breakdown of what our reservoir operations were in two thousand and seventeen. And I'd like to make sure that I point out, and I should point out periodically, the irrigation district is not a flood control district. We do the best we can to, to assist with flood mitigation efforts. We've been working hand-in-hand with county emergency management, the county manager, and as well as other agencies kind of assisting with it. And they've been extremely helpful with everything, and they were extremely helpful in two thousand and seventeen as well, but, but everything is kind of falling within the realm of what we've had to do in the past with two thousand and seventeen. So this graph kind of shows you what the max inflow coming to Bridgeport was in two thousand and seventeen, and our max releases was about thirteen seventy. The blue line is the, the, the pool of Topaz. Our siphons kick on at forty-two thousand acre feet, and we want to stay below that line. And then you have basically the releases on the, on the red on the graph, and then the dash green is the calculated inflow, as I mentioned. This is based on what we're modeling for this year. The black dash line is what two thousand and seventeen panned out to be. And then you have your exceedance forecast, obviously, the ninety percent being on the bottom, because that's the drier low end, which we don't anticipate. The green is what we're modeling, the, the red fifty percent, but there's the potential for the blue at the ten percent. It depends on how Mother Nature kind of continues moving forward with these, these impending storms between now and April. Based on our plan of operations for this year, we're wanting to keep the pool again below the siphons kicking off forty-two thousand. The one added layer on to this is the red bar being the, what are scheduled planned releases, and they will adjust depending upon if there's a change in the volumetric manner that we have that comes. And then the tan line that's in the back is the gauge here in Mason. That is the one that dictates whether Yarrington is in flood stage or not. That is on the Snyder Bridge. And you could see at the top of that peak that we're looking to stay at or below two thousand eight hundred. That will put us into minor flood stage, not major or anything like that. But there is already inundation when we had the higher water in through. Over the weekend, we were roughly between twenty-two hundred and twenty-three hundred, and we did see some flooding that has occurred in Mason, some low-line flood areas that naturally would happen. There's also an impact with our system that's not unique to a lot of others, which we have a, a high sediment load that comes in from the east side and into the main. And that does make it very tricky for channel capacities, especially during times of high water flow. This is a picture of Central and Smith Valley as the water was coming up almost to the, to the highest point in the afternoon. It did top over the guardrails. It did top over the streets. This area has flooded in the past several times. This all came off of the Desert Creek watershed, the Pine Grove Range, and the Wellington Hills area. Again, not from the releases from the irrigation district, but the creeks and all the drainage areas were unable to handle the amount of water that came. It was within our best estimates that there was something over four hundred CFS of water that was coming from Desert Creek alone. It did breach in multiple places and has washed out the road, State Route three-three-eight in multiple locations. And we've not got any updates as to when that is going to be open, but End dot is working on it right now. The amount of water that ended up here, again, flooded at a higher area of damage than what we saw in ninety-seven. Again, this is a breakdown of what happened in two thousand and seventeen, pretty much the same thing. We had a max inflow of about three thousand three hundred and eighty to the reservoir at Topaz. In the upper portion of the valley, we were running over four thousand CFS of water coming into Antelope Valley for a total of sixteen days. In two thousand and seventeen, we only ran that, or excuse me, in ninety-seven, we ran that for I want to say four days during that five-hundred-year flood event. So seventeen was sixteen days at that high flow. I don't know what was, it will depend on how everything kind of pans out. So this is our projection for the exceedance, again, the, the black dotted lines. And you can see that there's a lot of ups and downs, excuse me, the ebbs and flows with the curve. That was due to warming and cooling that naturally just happened during those time periods. And, you know, we're, we're hoping for a lot of luck on our side for that to occur again this year. But obviously, there's no guarantees with that. Obviously, the ninety percent at the bottom, the fifty percent in the green, and then the blue is the ten percent, what is, you know, worst-case scenario we're anticipating. So you can see that this could definitely exceed two thousand and seventeen if we continue to get more strong. So the same thing, the proposal for our operations here, what we're planning on doing is to bring Topaz down as well. And this is where the challenge is, is we are inundated with water in the low end, and we're kicking water out of our reservoirs, because we need to create a pool hole so that when the snow does start to come off, we can offset the amount of water we're going to have to send into the lower valleys by catching it into the reservoir. So that's why at both reservoirs, you see that, that very sharp curve on the reservoir pool. We're trying to pull them down as low as we can, as quickly as we can, obviously, without overburdening the system down here at the bottom. So the tan line, again, this, the portion, the way that it portions out, they all merge here at the confluence just upstream of the Snyder Bridge, and we're still trying to stay below that two thousand eight hundred CFS mark. So basically, in conclusion, you know, we're going to do our best. In, in two thousand and seventeen, we pushed six hundred and fourteen thousand acre feet during that period of April to July during peak flow. And the best-case scenario, our fifty percent is correct, and that, that would put us lesser than that amount at five hundred and seventy-three thousand acre feet. And obviously, we, we only peaked out at twenty-six twenty at the Mason Gauge, but we're proposing to go to two thousand eight hundred just because there's just no other way to, to avoid a reservoir failure. And if we have a reservoir failure on either or both sides, it would completely devastate the, the two communities, Smith and Mason. So we're going to do everything that we can to help mitigate that. Obviously, we don't have any control over Mother Nature, but we'll do the best we can. So us not being a flood control district, it's very difficult, but we're, we're doing what we can, and we're working with hand-in-hand with emergency management. We'll continue to do so. I'll answer any questions that you guys have at this time.
Thank you, Bert. Commissioners, questions for Bert? Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chair Hockney. First of all, appreciate your time here today. Very informative. So have you had much damage to your infrastructure of the irrigation ditches? And I, I mean, I saw some in the pictures, and then with that, just challenges that it might be to fix some of those in time for, I mean, irrigation season's going to roll around.
Well, that, that's, that's some of the largest challenges that we have. One, yes, our infrastructure did sustain quite a bit of damage as a result of the stuff on the east. On the west side, none of our canals are going to be able to turn on this in, in Smith Valley until we can get our resource request kind of satisfied by the state. We put in a resource request to get an engineer to do a full inspection of everything within the Hoy Canyon area. Our ditches are now starting to slough into the county road into Hoy Canyon, and it's basically closed. If we were to take our equipment up there, just one of our excavators weighs about fifty-seven thousand pounds, so we would definitely see a failure over there. We need it to dry out, and we need to go in there, get an assessment, get whatever repairs done, and then we can take the water. The thing that's different from two thousand and seventeen to today, that was in June when we were dry. We're in March and extremely wet. No one can take water. In fact, there was times where we were pushing water because some of the ditches had failed, and it was the only way to save the city from actually flooding. So we were using the district's conveyances of drains, because we have over two hundred and twenty-six miles of drainage, to try to funnel the water away from the city limits and get it away from where we knew the major portion was coming in. So we're in the process of trying to work with the private ditch companies, working with the district, and, and working with some private entities to try to alleviate those pressures, to fix those takeouts. And the hope is that we'll begin to, to dry out and warm up a little bit so that guys can start calling for water. Because it is a, a big, big drawback if we cannot utilize, because all of the figures that I showed you today are based on no one taking one. If we can get everything set up in a way that when people start portioning out sections of water, it's going to do multiple things. It's going to, the state engineer is concerned about groundwater. While we're very, we were one of the most robust basins, both Smith and Mason in the entire state out of two hundred and fifty-six. That's artificial recharge, and they, they need to go down the ditches in order to bring everybody's wells up up here. So that's a benefit. It takes away from the major portion of what's in the river, so that's actually going to assist in alleviating the pressure from flooding on some of these reaches. So the, the hope is we can get a little bit of luck on our side, get everything fixed, get dried out, and then start delivering water at this point. The state engineer is allowing what we did in two thousand and seventeen, which during the time of full and flood, they're not going against the duty, because you, you'll hear that when you're dealing with water. Everybody's worried about what the, you know, what your duty is. In the state of Nevada, in our basin, it's four acre feet per acre. The minute you turn on your, your well, which is underground, is state of Nevada water. That starts the clock for your duty, and that's any and all waters combined. But during this period, so not to scare these guys, and the assistance from the state, they're telling me, it's okay, they can take whatever water they can assist you with, and it's not going against their duty. It's kind of a timeout or a hold based on whatever water they could take. That's going to help us tremendously. It did in seventeen, and we're hoping for the same. The state engineer has contacted me and said that we can, we will be able to do that. We, we're already able to do that at the current junction. The problem is getting dry enough and getting guys out there. It's been such a, a monster of a winter that we have been told from a lot of folks in Smith and Mason, they haven't been able to get their spring stuff done. They have not been able to go into seed, and that's going to delay a lot of this stuff, because you guys can't, they can't get into these places to do that.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation and good luck. My main takeaway from this is probably it's not going to go away for a while.
No, we, we have the potential for sustaining very uncomfortable water levels within town here for, I would say probably a period of thirty to forty-five days at least, and, and it could potentially get worse. It depends on what Mother Nature decides to yield us with from this point forward. So it, it's really hard to say. But I mean, at this point, today was the first day I was able to bring anything. Today was the first day I was able to bring anything down on the reservoirs. We actually continued to store in Topaz. To offset the flooding that was occurring and the projected flooding that we were anticipating here in in Mason for about two days. Unfortunately, that's more water I gotta get rid of later. It'd help now, but it didn't help us later.
Right. Well, I want to thank you for for your efforts and for your cooperation with the county and other agencies because. This is something we can't do alone, so.
Thank you, guys. You guys have been great, you know, uh, the the emergency manager team has been wonderful. You guys have been tremendously helpful for everything that we've been doing. So thank you.
Commissioner Keller, you think? Commissioner Hendricks?
No, thank you for the report. It kind of sounds like we may be need to, may need to be hearing from you again in the future.
Any anytime the the board is interested, I'd be more than happy to give you guys a.
You're in charge of the irrigation district and uh definitely now in charge of the flood. Control. So we appreciate that. Definitely, uh, the the second five hundred year flood we've had in what twenty five years. Yeah, uh, so. Uh, we'll just keep on it. Appreciate all the work you've been doing. I mean, you're down there in Smith. Um, with the flooded renters and uh. It it's it's just a mess everywhere, north and south into the county. I appreciate all your work on it. Thank you. Were you going to? Follow on or do yours at your county manager report?
I'll do mine at the county manager report. Thank you.
All right. Six B, time certain nine fifteen, we're certainly past that. For possible action presentation, approve an investment advisory agreement with. F H N Financial Main Street Advisors LLC in the amount of point zero seven five percent. Of the quarterly bank in the amount of point zero one percent and to allow clerk treasurer to sign the contract. Uh, we have an investment advisory agreement with F H N. And a custody account application with U S Bank, so.
Right. My name is Greg Balls. I'm with F H N Main Street, uh F H N Financial Main Street Advisors. We always say F H N Main Street to make it uh. Easier. Um, and I am the Assistant Chief Investment Officer and Portfolio Manager. So you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so each of you should have a presentation here. I just want to talk a little about our company, what we do and the benefits the county. Um, do I control with this? Okay, sorry. All right, so. All right, so F H N Main Street, we were established in two thousand and five. And uh by our co-founders, uh Rick Phillips and Tanya Dazio. They went from the Clark County, um Nevada and and started the business. In two thousand twelve, we were acquired by First Horizon Bank. And so this shows you um kind of the structure of where we are. So we're on the bottom left there. So we're we're part of a large organization, but but we also like to say we're like a boutique shop because there's only, there there are six of us that we have. The resources of a a large corporation. So as far as um our clients' height. I'm going to just kind of point you to the to the right. So we we provide. Investment management and advisory services to state and local governments. That includes cities, counties, states, special districts and corporate, and we have one corporation. Our total assets under management and under advisement is eighty five billion. Our account size range between the uh ten million to over ten billion. And our clients are in Nevada, Idaho, Utah, California, or Oregon, Washington, and then Oklahoma and and Alabama. So some of our uh investment accounts here in Nevada, because it's very important, I think. We are very strong here in Nevada and we work very closely with the the state treasurer's office. But uh they include Clark County, Nevada. Um, the school district in Clark County, the state, state of Nevada, L G I P, um which Lion County currently utilizes. Southern Nevada Water District and then s- some um counties more. I guess your size would be like Douglas County, for example, Ereth County, uh the city of Carson. And then Elko County. And then a few I don't have lists is like Lander County is another um client that we have. So we're very familiar with the state of Nevada. So this is um. Who would oversee the account. So Rick Phillips at the top, Tanya Dazio there in the middle and a very young pitcher me at the bottom there. Um, Tanya and and Rick, they have over thirty years of experience. And again, they came. Rick came from Clark County, Nevada, before he was with the city of Las Vegas managing the money there. And and Tanya is with Clark County School District, then she went to Clark County Nevada and worked with Rick and then they founded the firm in two thousand five. I have fifteen plus years of experience. I worked with Zion's Bank. That's where I started. I moved to the state of Florida and I managed money for the state of Florida and then I moved back west to um Las Vegas. Right, so some of the resources that we have, so that's our group in Las Vegas, um at least the three who would oversee the account. Um, some of the resources that we have are economists, market strategists. And then we have credit municipal strategist as well. Other resources include Bloomberg, um credit rating agencies, credit sites and broker dealer and. Their their analysis and and their market research. So this is. What we had suggested to the county is to increase the investment o- income over. Um, the local government investment pool, which is where the bulk of the the funds are at this point in time. And we can focus on um. That allows us to focus on the market on behalf of the of the county. So the treasurer and her staff, they can focus on their many other duties. Because we realize they wear many hats and so we can focus solely on the investment side. We have access to thirty plus broker dealers that helps us get really good bids and offers for the county on the county's behalf. We invest according to state statute. Um, as well as the county's investment policy and also the county's cash flow needs. That's very important. And you guys mentioned this, but at the very bottom, we propose a seven and a half basis point management fee. Um, with investment management, there must be a custodial service and that's that um. We have an agreement with U S Bank and they would charge one basis point. So for ten million dollars, that'd be seven thousand five hundred annually. Um, for one basis point is uh a thousand dollars and that's for example of ten million. And one thing I I just want to point out, I had this at the very end. But I realized that there's a lot of concern with what's going on with regional banks right now. And the the one thing I just want to make expressly clear is that. When you make an investment, we don't, we don't control that. The investments are in the county's name. And so that's very important to know. Right, so the benefit, so this is a short portfolio versus long portfolio. In this case, the short portfolio is L G I P, which is the current, again, where the. The county has the current investments and it's going up against Clark County's pool, which is a longer portfolio, meaning they they can invest out longer term. We're going out to nineteen ninety nine. And so I I don't know if you can read that very well, but um what we did is we averaged the yield each year for both portfolios. And then um we look at the average for that that course of time. And so for the longer portfolio, the the yield was two point six two percent versus L G I P, which averaged one point nine six percent. So that's a difference of point six six percent. And so, for example, on a portfolio size of fifty million dollars, an additional um yield of point six six percent. Um, the gross is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Um, strip out the fees, it's about two hundred and eighty seven uh. Thousand dollars a year. And so that's of additional annual income net of fees. And so that really adds up over time. You know, you think of what the the county can do with those those funds. And so that's why we propose taking some of the funds and investing out with it long, longer term. Um. I don't want to get too much into this unless you guys want me to, but this is just kind of our strategy. We really focus on cash flow optimization, knowing the cash flow and investing according to the cash flow needs. The last thing we want is for you guys to, for the county not to have liquidity. And so we we ensure that liquidity needs are met. And so on the left side, just this portfolio structuring, you know, how much do you need inside a year versus outside a year, tactical positioning? That's just um things that we do according to what the market is doing now. And so it when rates are going higher, we might buy shorter data securities so we can take advantage of higher yields sooner. When yields are going to go lower, we might try to walk in rates and invest out longer. That's kind of an example of strategies that we do. Um, cash flow analysis, we have not performed this for the county, but but should you um approve, we would run a cash flow analysis. And we look at the cyclical of uh the the county, you know, where is that we can invest? The so in this example, you can see how there's a cyclical nature of this specific entity. And that's what we look for the county as well and invest accordingly. Once we know this, then that helps us uh be able to generate investment income for the accounting, the the county in a prudent manner. The type of securities that the county can invest according to Nevada statute. We have, I have them listed here. Now, I I want to point out, um. There there's a difference between, you have safety. You have credit risk and then you have interest rate risk. And so. We consider U S treasuries be the safest type of investments, U S agencies, F D I C insured CDs. And then the money markets are actually invested in treasuries and agencies. Everything below the money market funds, uh you have credit risk. And we work closely with all of our our um clients. If they're comfortable with credit, we look at credit like um Johnson Johnson or um. I'm I'm trying to think of names off the top of my head, Exxon, Exxon Mobil or Apple, you know, we, those are bonds that the county could invest in. But if you're not comfortable with credit, then we don't have to buy that. And it can be more on the safe side with U S treasuries, agencies and F D I C insured CDs. This is an example of um a report. This actually is for L G I P's report for um Fe- uh February, actually. So we provide this uh type of report to all of our clients. This is just one page, a summary snapshot and we provide that uh to the county as well. On on a monthly basis. So in summary, um what we do is we help increase the incremental income over the the long run for the county. You know, just think of what you could do with two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars of, if that were to. Continue going forward, you know, what what the county could do with that that money. Um, we perform cash flow analysis. We work closely with the county to ensure liquidity. Again, the last thing we want is for you guys to say, we need a million dollars. We don't have it. You know what I mean? We we really strive. To know the cash flow, protect that. Uh, we provide reconciled monthly reporting. Um, we also do investment policy reviews as well to to ensure that they um. Match the Nevada state statutes. We provide conference calls at least quarterly and an onsite visit at least annually and economic and market updates. And if there's uh ever a time that we need to come before the board, we're more than welcome to do that. If any of you guys ever had any questions, you could call us. We'd be more than happy to speak to you as well. And so that's us, um, that's the the our our thoughts in a nutshell, but I just want to make sure there are no questions. Oh, do you know what? I have to, I have to point this out, though. In light of recent events, investments will be held at a third party custodian in a county's name. F H N Main Street does not have the ability or authorization to move funds to and from the account. Our parent company, First Horizon Bank, does not have claim on the funds. All investments are held in the county's name to protect the county. F H N Main Street is only given authorization to trade on behalf of the county. And so this what was going on, I I I want, again, I want to make that explicitly clear that you're comfortable that. We, the only thing that we're given is the authorization to trade on the account. Everything is held in the county's name. So. Um, without any, any questions?
Commissioners, questions?
Not for him.
Yeah.
You know, okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockney. Um, I I should have maybe stopped you during the presentation. I followed on. Almost all of it, except for like one of the early slides, the ten million to seventy five hundred.
Okay.
What? Help me understand that last bullet point there.
So.
Or the last three, I guess, but the main bullet point.
Absolutely. So our proposed fee, the investment, so there there there's basically two parts of the the whole program. One is the investment management side, which we charge seven and a half basis points. So I give the example, if if you had ten million dollars with us, it would be seventy five hundred dollars annually.
That would be your, okay.
Our fee.
All right, I I got it, I got it.
Got it.
Thank you, sir.
My, my pleasure.
You have a question? No question, Mr. Hill. Okay. Um. I believe from. Ms. Lindberg, are you going to discuss a few things with us here? Thank you.
I wanted to give a little background why we brought Greg in today. Stacy Lindberg, Lion County Treasurer for the record. And I was uh talking with Josh and I've reached out to all the other counties because we really haven't had a very aggressive investment policy for the funds held in the county. Um, we do, we did use the L G I P and um actually L G I P also recommended his firm. Along with the other counties and we we met with a couple different. Agencies um to pick the correct one that we thought would be best. And get get the best thing for a buck. And I think in getting an advisor that is a full eye on a hundred percent um. Driven at. Using our money to make us money um is a good call. So I am bringing it to you in hopes that you agree and. And we can uh go under contract and get uh this investment going. This investment program going. Been working with Josh, um, I don't know if he's here, but. Um, and getting an investment policy. So he he has instructions on what what risks we're willing to take, what. Um, avenues that he drives his investments on our behalf. So I think it would make us, you know, like he was given, I mean, it looked, you know, a few weeks ago, it looked a little higher. We were looking around five hundred thousand a year. Um, but just with, you know, the instability or something, we're looking, you know, down around two hundred and fifty thousand a year. But at this point, if we, if we're not utilizing that money, we're not making anything.
Questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How much money do we have invested in L G I P now?
Um, right around, I think the last one was like a hundred and three.
Hundred, hundred and three million. Okay, so then.
I think that maybe taking fifty million. And and giving it to the advisor to invest for us.
So.
And therefore currently works for L G I P as well.
Yeah, so. Fifty million, so then the seventy five hundred times five would be. Uh, thirty five, thirty seven, fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Be what it costs us.
Okay. But. Commissioner Hendrick.
I kind of like to hear risk assessment.
Well, when I was, when I spoke with L G I P, um what they do is we make sure that the the banks that we're dealing with, like our custodian, U S Bank. Is in the pool with L G I P and the L G I P ensures our investments and our cash and got it count up to a hundred and two percent.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Keller. No? Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockney. I appreciate the that, uh, Ms. Lindberg, and I'm. Looking forward to hearing uh what Mr. Foley has to say on the. Because uh in being around. Mr. Foley, I trust his conservative nature and fact that he crosses his T's so he doesn't get dotted in the I's.
Like that. I haven't heard that before. Josh Foley, Lion County, come for the record. So um Stacy and I have been working closely together on this. This is. These are still very conservative investments that we're talking about, um, U S. T bills, treasuries, those type of things and um high quality bank CDs or. For those type of investments. And so I am very comfortable with this, with interest rates where they're at right now. And the amount of cash that we have sitting there, which will decline over time. And the chart that he showed of the cash balances. I can just send him the Excel file because I keep that for a number of years. That's easy to do, but um we should be in good shape and I hope that we can move forward with this. Although our recommendation at the beginning is that we look at the three month timeframe because of the. And fiscal year and all of that. I don't want to report losses on my financials at the end of the year.
Questions for Mr. Foley, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm kind of curious about the. The the presentation about we're gonna. Enter into a contract and then develop an investment policy. Isn't that a little backwards?
Yes, technically it is. So by default, our investment policy uh follows state law, right? We can't invest in anything more aggressive than X, Y, and Z. And of course. As you pointed out, I'm very conservative in nature anyways. And so we're having those discussions. We do have an investment policy, which mirrors state law. I can't find it because it was done twelve or fifteen years ago, and I was not the custodian of that investment policy. So we plan on rewriting a newer, improved one for you. Ideally, yes, we would have them both before you at the same time. Unfortunately, the legislature is in session and they're driving me crazy already. So I'm working a number of hours and haven't had the time to, to work with Stacy and she's had her hands full to, to get that investment policy. In place, but at this point, I think we can use reasonable, uh, controls to do a reasonable amount in this investment.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Foley, Commissioner Jacobson?
Well, I guess on the, from what the presentation and, and the reading material, it looks like a similar county, Elko County. Uses the same. And what do we have an idea of how much money they benefited? It looked like forty million is what they. Invested or like it's called an investment, so.
Yeah, so Elko County, the, the, uh, we currently manage about forty-three million. They actually put an additional twenty million with us in November. Because I, again, we manage L G I P right now, but I explained to them, I said, listen, we can actually buy a three month. T bill or a three month, month agency discount now and earn you one percent more than L G I P right now. And so we actually have twenty million that we're just kind of rolling. Um, when I calculated it in February, we had earned them within a month and a half, fifty-three thousand dollars on that twenty million above L G I P. Is probably double that, well, close to double that now, I don't quote me on that because I haven't calculated it for like a month. But, um, but anyways, that's one thing that we did for Elko County, uh. Uh, Douglas County, your, your other neighbor, they've actually been a client of ours for much longer. Um, I don't have their, how much we've earned right in front of me, but it's, it's significantly higher than L G I P. I can tell you that much, just because they're a longer portfolio than, than L G I P. And we were buying yields, um. They're a lot higher now, but like we were able to buy like a two point five percent yield, for example, that was two point five percent for three years. Versus L G I P that went all the way down to like point zero nine percent, that makes sense, so. Um, yeah, I asked your question. And one last example is like you look at F D I C insured CDs right now. Um, yesterday I bought several that were like five percent yields. I, I don't know, um, if we'll see treasuries get that high, maybe the front end does. I don't want to get too much into what the market's going to do, but, um, but over the long run, you know, we just, we think that locking in that five percent yield. Will pay benefits in like eighteen months, for example, so. You want me to add anything else? All right.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, my, my questions basically were risk, um, and I think Mr. Foley kind of put my. Mind at ease on that one, but I did have a question, you know, we're seeing Silicon Valley go down the tubes, Signature go down the tubes. They're talking fifteen, sixteen banks that are in the top echelon, Wells Fargo, Bank of America. Uh, where's U S Bank fall? I haven't seen them, are they a pretty solid bank since you do quite a bit of? We're doing business with them.
So in my opinion, they are a pretty solid bank. Um, we're kind of reassessing everything with every bank at the same time as well. Um, just because, um, what's going on now is a lot different than the two thousand eight crisis. You know, it's, uh, two thousand eight, it was the, the investments that they were buying was subprime, not necessarily U S Bank, to say. But now a lot of the banks, they're buying treasuries. And that's, the concern is their assets and liabilities don't match, and so there's that liquidity issue. So we, we do manage risk, um. Like, for example, credit risk, there's two types of risk that you'll, you'll, that you'll have with any investor. One is credit risk, the other is interest rate risk. So credit risk is that something defaults. And so we, we perform credit analysis and we diversify. Um, or if you're not comfortable, we don't, we don't even invest in credit. Um, interest rate risk is different, that's, we, you buy a bond and interest rates go higher. Well, in the last, well, since January twenty twenty-two, the Fed raised rates seventeen times. Uh, interest rates increased the most in a century at least. And so because of that, you have unrealized losses. And, and the one thing that we point out with respect to interest rate risk is we dollar cost average. Um, we also, we, we do make plays, again, when, um, we think rates go higher, we shorten. Investments that help reduce the interest rate risk. But we also manage according to cash flow, meaning we typically buy and hold. So if you buy a bond now, um, although the value will fluctuate. At maturity, you, you get everything back, as long as it doesn't default. But, so like a treasury, we invest in a treasury, we know we're going to get it back at maturity, if we don't sell it. Uh, prior to maturity.
Okay, thank you. And one more question. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, another question?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry to, to not have asked this earlier. So if we approve this, does it just take effect today or is it going to take effect at the start of the fiscal year? Today?
One thing to add to, because I spoke with L G I P and your concerns about the risk. But they also, um, U S Bank is on their list where they actively review their assets and. And make sure that they're stable daily, that's part of their job and that, uh, provides us. Comfort in investment, investing in the banks that we currently do business with.
Having said that, how quickly can we get our money out if things start to tank?
Josh Foley, Lion County, come forth for the record. So technically, most of the securities that we're going to be purchasing. Have an open market and you can sell them within a couple of days and they cash out. However, as he was pointing out, most of the time what you want to do is just hold it to maturity because we're buying. Um, ones that aren't fluctuating and, and interest.
Like CDs and things such as that are good, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, do we have any, uh, public comment? And look like.
Done on Zoom.
Nothing on Zoom, nothing in the house, so we will, uh, move on with, uh, motion, do I have any motion from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve an investment advisory agreement with F H N Financial Main Street Advisors LLC. In the amount of zero point zero seven five percent of the quarterly average. And naming U S Bank as custodian of investment funds. And opening the account with U S Bank in the amount of zero point zero one percent and to allow clerk treasurer to sign the contracts. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller, all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? We have a five zero. And thank you very much for your presentation. And it looks like we have two minutes to ten, um, do we have any word from the District Attorney?
Um, District Attorney Rye is on, um, we can, we can either take that item now or, um, we can do seven A first.
And it depends on the District Attorney, where he's at, because he's.
I'm fine if you, uh, want to do seven A first.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we'll go on to present seven A for presentation only, recognize Human Resources Director Eric Malavsky. For outstanding commitment and performance to the employees of Lion County.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County Manager for the record. Um, so as most of you are aware, or you're probably aware, um, Eric Malavsky is leaving Lion County. His last day will be next week, and so, um, a lot of times we don't, um, recognize an employee at the. At the time of them leaving the county, however, um, this, in this instance. Um, I thought it would be appropriate to recognize Eric, he's been a huge asset to Lion County. Um, he has been a, an incredible resource for me as I've moved up into the county manager role, I am in his office. Daily, at least once, so, um, you know, uh, he's, um. You know, we're, we're, we're really going to miss him here, and so, um, I felt that it was appropriate to. To call him up and we have a little certificate of appreciation here. Given, I don't know if he wants to say a few words about his time here at Lion County, but that, um. Again, felt that it was really appropriate to, to mention.
Eric, did you want to say a few words?
Uh, just that it's been an honor to work here, I've learned a lot, um. Made some colleagues and friends that'll hopefully stay friends like for a long time, um, it's been an honor to serve this board. And, uh, it's not the Oscars, so it's not the place for individual thank yous for everyone. It's just, it's, I appreciate it, thank you.
And Commissioners? Any comments from Commissioners here, Commissioner Hendricks?
Just thank you for your service to Lion County.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, th- thank you, Mr. Chair, Eric, we're going to miss you, you're gonna, it's going to be a challenge to replace you with someone of, of your qualifications. But we certainly appreciate all you've done for Lion County.
Commissioner Keller?
Again, thank you, thank you for your time.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockley, uh, thank you, Eric, wish you well, um, tackled some interesting items that have come down the pike for you. And, uh, you've handled them great, uh, you're leaving the H R department in wonderful shape, uh, that's appreciated. And I'm guessing you'll always be welcome back. So when you realize that you're leaving kind of Graceland for whatever else, you'll maybe come back, all right?
I just wanted to thank you because it's been a real pleasure to work with you. I know we've had some discussions in the morning on our way in, and I, I really appreciate all you've done for the county. So, thank you very much.
Before we get to pictures, um, Mr. Foley would like to say, say a few words. All right, well, he'll, he'll say.
If I could ask in this picture that we get some of the other folks that worked for Lion County in the picture as well, maybe Shayla and. And I, I mean, everyone that's here that works, so.
Always the last word, Mr. Foley.
Josh Foley, Lion County, come forth for the record, thank you. Um, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the work done there, Eric. There's just some coming about it, so I'll leave it at that before I.
I don't, I don't think you've ever done that. Josh. So we are going to go to item twenty-one A. Commissioner Keller will be right back. Let me get to it here. I'll go ahead and read it and then hopefully Commissioner Keller will be back about the time I'm done. For possible action, approve the addition of one new classification to the Deputy District Attorney Classification Series. And amend the compensation plan by adjusting the salary ranges for classifications within this series. And District Attorney Rye will, uh, present the information here.
Actually, I believe, um, Eric.
Oh, Eric. All right, good.
Uh, good morning, Eric Malavsky, H R Director. Um, so I'll just present this quickly and Steve, feel free to chime in, uh, at any point that you want to. Um, so recruiting and retaining attorneys has been a challenge over the last few years. Um, demand in the region just exceeds supply. Um, this has been a challenge, not, uh, only with respect to getting like kids right out of law school to come join. But also in terms of holding on to those attorneys who do have three, four, or five years experience. Uh, with us and then become very marketable and desirable in other places. Um, in the last five years that I've been here, we've had, I believe, nine attorney separations. Of those nine, six have departed for other nearby counties, other D A's offices. Or a shorter commute, more pay or both. Um, and so today's initiative, um, serves to essentially make the calculus a little more favorable for us. When it comes time for people to make those types of business decisions. I should add that, um, the external review feedback, uh, has been consistently good when it comes to the workplace culture in the D A's office. So we know that, you know, again, it is just a matter of money and commute for, for most people when they make these decisions. And, um, so again, that's, that's what we're serving, that's what we're trying to, um, trying to address today. So what we're doing, or what we're proposing to do is, uh, adding one tier of, one tier, additional tier of classifications to the job family. Um, so that the Deputy D A's have an opportunity to promote at both three years of service and five years of service. So, um, they are here for three years, they're doing well, they get more responsibility and opportunity to promote up to D A, Deputy D A two. Uh, and then again, at five years, um, provided they stay on that track of progressively responsible experience, um. More leadership, responsibility, lead direction to others, that kind of thing, they can promote that again. Um, the two reallocation of pay ranges that would occur, um, by virtue of this initiative would be. Changes in the Deputy D A two, or excuse me, Senior Deputy D A and Chief Deputy D A classifications. Um, and that would make sure, uh, that we don't lose experienced leaders in the office like Carmella Reed over there, uh, Brian Haslam. Um, we've lost some folks like that over the last few years and it's hurt the office and, uh, we want to, we want to, we want to hold on to those folks. Um, fiscal impact, uh, for the current fiscal year, provided we make this effective today. Would be, um, be a little under eight thousand, I think in the backup I had put nine thousand, not accounting for a recent merit increase. That someone was going to get anyway. Um, there's plenty more than that available in the budget, um, because of savings, uh, associated with carrying the vacancies that the offices had the entire fiscal year. Um, so Steve, I, hopefully I've covered the gist of it, if you would like to add anything, please, please feel free.
Yeah, go ahead, District Attorney Rye. Unmute?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Rye, D A. Uh, I appreciate Eric putting this together, this is something, uh, that Eric's been working on for. For a while, we've had several discussions over the last couple of years on, um, how to maybe. Try to improve retention and recruitment and both Eric and Amanda have been very helpful in that regard. And this was one of the options we were looking at. It is consistent with the other, uh, counties, I believe, that, that are similarly situated, such as Elko. Uh, Churchill, Douglas, Carson, Nye. Uh, they have similar pay bands, so we think it's, it would be a good tool for, for the Lion County D A's office. We do realize there is a fiscal impact. Um, however, we think in the long run would be beneficial for the office in Lion County. So, um, I'm asking that you move forward with this. Uh, the timing, I think that, uh, Josh and Eric decided this would be the, a good time to present it. Um, and, uh, the board wants to adjust that or whatever you think's necessary. Uh, we're, you know, I'm happy to work with the timing of it, uh, we would appreciate it though, this fiscal year if possible.
Commissioner comments? Any comments? Public comment? And I.
None on Zoom?
Uh, I don't see anything on, uh, the screen or in chambers. And I, I just think that we've got to compete, we've got to keep our good attorneys. And, uh, they're always moving out and we're retraining, then that's a loss for us overall. So I certainly think that, uh, the attorneys deserve to get better compensations that we can retain them. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion.
Have a motion? Motion to approve the addition of one new classification to the Deputy District Attorney's. Classification series and amend the compensation plan by adjusting the salary ranges for classifications within the series as it was presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Jacobson, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed with five oh? Uh, thank you, uh, District Attorney Rye and uh, Eric for your. Presentation there on it. And I believe we are at eight. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Back to eight, Commissioner and County Manager Reports. I'm gonna start off real quick by thanking uh. Governor Lombardo for his surprise visit to the county yesterday. Um, came over in a helicopter with his staff. And did a reconnaissance of Lyon County and the flood and damages and then came here for a briefing. Appreciate the staff. Jumping to it in the morning. When I got here, it was, you know, all hands on deck, everybody typing up presentations, throwing together slides. Pick, I mean, it was amazing how quickly everybody got things together. Um, he was a little late, which is fine, better late than never, but uh, that was because he had a lot of places to look at in the county as far as. Floods and river beds and everything else. So I do appreciate him coming. And uh, checking out Lyon County. Uh, kinda nice to have a governor that takes an interest in the rural counties. That's pretty much what I have to say at the beginning here. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Um, uh, just drove around to a bunch of the flooded areas as well. And I want to thank the county uh, staff for their work uh, to help mitigate as much damage as possible. Um, and uh, obviously thank the citizens as well for. For for their work um, in their neighborhoods um, and protecting their property. Um, uh, on a, on a brighter note, um. Uh, every year at this time, uh, a good friend of mine and I do a Hunter's Education Class. And I want to wish our twenty-five recent graduates from our last one with their Hunter Safety Cards, good luck. Uh, and all the residents of Lyon County that hunt, good luck during the upcoming big game draw. So. That's not much of a county deal, but uh, it's a big deal to the lot of these kids and families. So. Good luck. That's all I have, Commissioner, our Chair Hockaday.
Uh, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, yeah, I'd like to thank all of the county staff, the Walker River Irrigation District, the Sheriff's Department, Mason Valley Fire. And especially Taylor and Dustin for all the work you guys put in this week during all. Of the flooding and thank Andrew for giving me a tour of a lot of the damage in um, Dayton. Um, last night I did attend with Commissioner Keller, the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Meeting. And I enjoyed that. I think it's gonna be a real learning experience.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, not a whole lot to report on today. I also want to thank our county staff. You know, Sheriff's Department, Road Department, utilities departments, you guys have been doing an an. An excellent job under very difficult circumstances and we appreciate it. Now, I attended both the. Western Nevada Legislative Coalition and the NACO Legislative Committee meetings last Thursday. Uh, things are are going, moving at at the legislature at their normal slow pace for the first half of the of the session. But so far, um, nothing that's really detrimental to Lyon County at the particular time. We do think the Senate Bill eighty-one, which was Senator Daley's bill on regional planning. Is going to move forward in some fashion. But it's not gonna be as egregious as the Senator would would like it to be. Also attended uh, the Regional Transportation Commission meeting yesterday morning where we um. Reimbursed the city of Yarrington for some of the funds that they've expended on their water and sewer projects. And. You drive around Yarrington, you notice the roads are are starting to get better. It's been a long, long uh. Project and and very expensive, but we're doing that. And I would also like to thank the governor for coming down here yesterday. Since I was here for the RTC meeting. I s- I stayed and and attended that briefing as well. And I want to thank our staff for for the presentations that they give. And uh, Bert from Walker River Irrigation District. Uh, I think. Opened some eyes with the governor's staff. So I think it was very productive. And again, thanks to our staff for for all your work and that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
I too would like to thank the staff and department heads and all the department uh, workers. During these trying times, this isn't our. Normal. Uh, operations. Due to floods and I don't think it's gonna get any better in the next week or two. Um. I've attended, uh, while I've reached out to the committees and boards that I'm sitting on. And I'm getting on their calendar and stuff, so I haven't really been active with any of my, only one that I went to was the Carson Water Sub Conservancy. With uh, Tammy and. Uh. A lot of information there. I I the only reason why I'm attending is just to get a better knowledge of the area on the on the water issues. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, one additional thing I did in the site yesterday uh, afternoon, I did get back to Smith Valley, believe it or not. Um, the um. Smith Valley Rotary. Group had a speech contest at the Smith Valley High School and. I just wanted to extend my. Appreciation for being asked to come be a judge, but it's it's always a pleasure to go see the young. Kids in school and how they're able to stand up and present uh, a very. Outstanding speech on different items that are kind of presented to them. And they come up with this and they try to memorize it and. Uh, it just, it's impressive when I see the young, young kids do stuff such as that. And really getting involved in the community. So. You know, Smith Valley, Yarrington. Last year I did judge the Yarrington Rotary Speech Contest, but. It's it's just always impressive to see the young kids out there doing what they're doing. Go ahead with uh, your report of County Manager. Haskin.
Alright, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Um, so picture's worth a thousand words. So I I put together. Actually, this is part of the briefing that we gave the governor yesterday. Um, he did uh, stop by here in Yarrington. Um, he flew over um, in a National Guard helicopter. To take a look at some of the damage um, and uh, all around Lyon County. And uh, so we're very grateful for his visit. Um, the Chief of the Department of Emergency Management was with them. Uh, General Berry was with them. Um, it was a productive meeting. Um, and. Really good. Um. So um, I'll just kind of jump right into this presentation. Uh, again, it's mostly pictures. I I just. Kinda wanna make sure that um, I'll see the. The extent of the damage that we've seen from flooding already and kinda. And we're, we're hoping that it's not just a preview of what's to come, but as you heard in Bert's presentation, um, it's gonna take a. Pretty delicate balancing act to make sure that we don't experience extensive flooding issues. Here in twenty twenty-three. Uh, this is a a picture looking south. Um, you can see the Miller Bridge there, kind of in the middle of that picture. Um, and those fields are part of the Walker uh, or. Are a part of the um. The Conservancy out there, the, or excuse me, the uh, Wildlife Preserve out there. So um, you can see that there's already some sense of flooding up in that. That area. Um, those areas typically flood, they're pretty low lying. Um, so. Um, nothing, nothing surprising. Then uh, this is a graph, uh, this is something that wasn't in Bert's presentation of. The East Walker River at the Stro- Strohsneider Gage on that peak there um, was a Saturday. Um, and caused us quite a bit of alarm. Um, as Bert had mentioned, um, we were very fortunate in that it. Dispersed across um, vacant lands out um, in the. State Park. It did damage the state park pretty considerably, but um. Instead of just all rushing down the river, it spread out, slowed down. And so we didn't have the major impacts that we were thinking we were gonna have. Um, here in town. When the gauge started reading this high, which as Bert mentioned was a all-time recorded high, um. You know, we. Went to work. I mean, we were already working. Um, Taylor and I had spent the day in Smith Valley di- doing damage assessment and working. There and we rushed back over here. Um, called. Mr. Foley and Mr. Homestead. They came down here to the EOC. We were working with the fire department uh, um. To knock on doors and let people know, hey, this water's coming. Please sandbag. Um, again, it, it wasn't a false alarm. We just got very lucky. And so um, I wanna make that point, but um, we still saw some pretty high water um, here in the main part of the river. That's um, that did cause some issues. So. Bert already touched on this, so I won't spend too much time here, but if we don't get any more water this, this year. Um, we would be somewhere on that red line there. Um, twenty seventeen is that blue graph underneath. So you can see we're, we're already above that as far as the amount of water. It just depends on how it, how and when it comes down, as Bert had touched on. So we're by no means out of the woods. So. This is a map, um, that Mr. Homestead brought down actually, um. That shows the twenty-seven, or the, excuse me, the nineteen ninety-seven flooding. Um, that happened here in Yarrington. Uh, you can see the arrow there uh, showing where this building is. And you can see it totally surrounded by water, no water here, but. Completely surrounded. So you can see why we um, had have some concerns uh, moving forward and why we had some concerns. Um, on Saturday night and and Sunday. Um, so this picture here is out by the Perrin Suns Building, south of town. Um, this is where the river breached. In twenty seventeen, or I mean twen- excuse me, nineteen ninety-seven, huh? Um, and you can see there's already water sitting out there. There was a levee that was built after the ninety-seven flood and that is holding. Um. But you can see um, that that there's already some water out there. So if um, some, that's something that we're, we are monitoring closely. Um, of course, here is Smith Valley, uh, two-eight at Central. Um, you already saw these pictures in Bert's presentation, um. And uh, obviously there were some pretty significant impacts. Those businesses had good three feet of water in them. Uh, last Friday and Saturday. This is an aerial of the Walker River looking south below the weir. And you can see a lot of water outside of the riverbanks. Um, this was all dried prior to to the event. So you can see there's some impacts there. And then out along the East Walker River, this is really kind of what saved us. You can see, I wish the pointer worked on this. In the middle, you can see the actual river and then you can see all the water kind of flowing out and around. Um, in the wetlands. This is actually taken Monday morning, so two days after um, the major impact. So um. You can get an idea of how much of that water that we saw in those high flows spread out across the low lying areas. Uh, so really important. Uh, again, really helped us out. And again, this is the East Walker River again. Um, I think a little bit further out. And then there's kind of a broader picture of the East Walker. Um. I, my understanding, and of course, we weren't there, but my understanding is that parts of the East Walker Road had about eight feet of water on it. So um. We uh. Pretty, pretty significant. Uh, so. Um, this is Missouri Flats, south of Mason Valley. Um, there's been some impacts. Or in the south end of Mason Valley, um, there's been some impacts there coming off the Forest Service land. Uh, there was quite a bunch, a lot of mud that had ran. Off of the mountains, off of the hills and into people's yards. It filled in one of the irrigation ditches down there. Um, we. Did actually already go out there and kind of do a rough rate of the road just to get it passable again, so people could get out, but um. The Missouri Lane had probably two feet of water on it, um, running down at point point here. Um, this is a semi truck that's stuck on uh, Sweetwater Road, far south end of the county. They were trying to go from. From what, three thirty-nine to ninety-five in Hawthorne, over the mountains. And so um, they got stuck. Their GPS took them that way. They were stuck there for five days. Actually saw a picture, um, a different picture, not the aerial. But from the actual truck itself, then there was a good two, two to three feet of snow all around in the day. So why they went down that road, I don't know. Um, but anyway, it, that, my understanding is the truck is still, still sitting there, so. Um, please try to avoid those, those roads as I've mentioned in the past. Um. Moving kind of to the north part of the county, here's uh, the Rollinay Park in Dayton. You can see there was quite a bit of water flowing through the park. This is actually from the six mile drainage and from the Cardelli ditch. That's where. This water came from. Um, so you can see there's some pretty extensive damage to the park there. Um. So, this is out Dayton Valley Road. Um, the picture on the left is looking down Rancho. Road and then the picture on the right is actually Dayton Valley Road. You can see there was quite a bit of water on it. And Rancho Road and it was running through, you know, people's yards. Uh, I know there was a few houses that that got flooded and. And I talked to a few of the residents. This is out in those Dayton Valley's ranches as well. Um. It, interestingly enough, it, it, so the water took a different path than it did in January. It was kind of um. Kind of surprising for me, I guess. It was more water than we had in January, so I think that that's why, but uh, um. There was a lot greater impacts this one than there were in January. Um, I know we had heard from some residents at North Rainbow Road. This is something that we are aware of and we're gonna be working on. Um, this is a, that's a thirty-six inch culvert, so that gives you an idea of the size. That culvert was completely over. Um, and so washed out part of the road and then washed down through. Through people's yards. So we'll be working on this. Um, people have to understand though that the. Up until this point, we've been focusing on life safety stuff and making sure that people can get in and out of their homes. Um, and we really have to wait for this to dry out before there's much that we can do to fix the problem. So. I wanna point that out. Um, this is in Stagecoach. Um, so you can see there was quite a bit of flow in Stagecoach as well. Um. This next picture, that picture on the right is uh, Boyer. And you can see it picked up those culverts and just. Tossed them and moved them. This is kind of what I was talking about, about making sure that people can get in and out of their homes. I mean, there was a big hole there right along the side of the road. Where people's driveways used to be. And so we've been having to go in and temporarily fix those uh, um, just so people can get in and out and pass. Make it passable. Um, so. That's something that our road crews have been out there doing. And then this is Mount House. Uh, um, there was quite a bit of impacts in Mount House as well. Obviously, this is after the water had started to recede. Um, but you can see there, there was some, some significant impacts. So. So um, you know, all in all that, I mean, um, there were, there was quite a bit of activity going on. Um. Basically Thursday night through. Uh, even now, um, with county road crews and and county staff out there, um. Doing their best to to help people out and to assess the damage. We're gonna be doing some. Actually, we've already started doing the formal damage assessments. I mean, Taylor might talk about that, I'm not sure. Um, but um. You know, it's something that that we're aware of. I just asked the P P P patients, um. And I know that we are working to address these issues. It's just gonna take a bit of time. It's, because it's widespread. It's really all over the county. Um, I cannot thank staff enough. Um, you know, Taylor and I were out. And about, I mean, we've been out and about since the event started. I mean, uh, I know she's putting, putting in sixteen hour plus days. I know Dustin's been putting in, he says eighteen and a half. I count more like twenty hour days. I keep telling him to go home and he's like, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna go home. And then I talked to him the next morning. He's like, yeah, I worked till midnight last night, hauling sand. So. Um, you know, he's, he's been out there, um, doing great work. I know Mr. Burketa um, has been instrumental in helping with uh, phones. We still have our call center. Actually, I believe it's closed now, but um, we had our call center in Dayton. Um, answering phones and um, at night when we didn't have coverage, uh, I know Mr. Burketa had transferred that to his phone. So he was answering as close as possible. So, really appreciative of that. And again, um, you know, Saturday night when the water was coming towards town. Um, you know, I made a few phone calls and almost innocently, Mr. Foley was there, Mr. Homestead was there. What do you need? What can we do? Mr. Homestead had a whole like scrapbook from nineteen ninety-seven showing where the water was going. And at that time and, you know, kinda, okay, here's what we can expect if this happens. Here's what we can expect if this happens. Just a ton of knowledge. And then I really want to thank the Walker River Irrigation District, um, and Bert Brian. Um, the, you know, he has extensive knowledge on this river system and he is working tirelessly to make sure that. Um, we can minimize the impacts. Uh, um, we're stuck. In a place where we will have to release water out of the reservoirs, so that we don't risk losing those reservoirs. And so. Um, you know, he's on top of it and. Um, you know, he's on top of it, and, um, you know, probably going to see the waters rise on the river, but. Just know that that's to create or to prevent creating a a further problem down the road. So, um, really, I I again, wanna wanna thank staff. Um, for everything that they've done throughout this this storm. And what we're going to be doing, you know, throughout this spring and probably summer. So, um, something, uh. So we did have to close Mason Pass Road there for a little bit on Friday and Saturday, um, I know that Dustin had his crews out there. I want to read an email that I got from a citizen that says, Sir Dustin, uh, as an almost daily commuter, uh, the. I, to be fair, this email was sent prior to this weekend, but I know that they have been working. Says, as an almost daily commuter from Yarrington to Smith Valley and back to, uh, and back to do inspections. I had had to use Mason Pass Road since the Great Wall Rock Slide and Wilson Canyon. I have passed through since the beginning with all the snow, through the super saturation period, through the big snow melt period, through drier days, more snow. And all the days in between. I drive a small Subaru and like to let you know, I've never felt unsafe or worried that I might get stuck, slide off the road. Or be stranded for any number of reasons, uh, I'm writing this email to thank you and the road crew for doing an amazing job out there. It seems that no matter what Mother Nature threw down on you, the road crew has always been right there, making life a little better for all of us commuters. Your crew has tackled flooding and made extents, uh, extremely dangerous conditions, very less dangerous, so. On top of that, your crew continues to be professional, courteous, and. I've lived in Lyon County for over thirty years and have always respected and appreciated all that you do to make us all better off than we would be without you. Making Mason impassable road into Mason Pass Road simply proves how valuable. Your department is to our county, again, thank you for all the effort and hard work out there. I hope you share this email as with the crew as they have been outstanding and awesome, so I wanted to make sure that I shared that with the board as well. Um, and unfortunately Dustin had to had to run this morning, but, um. I know that he is already seeing this email, so. Um, with that, oh, I have one other thing that I do want to bring up unrelated to flooding, um. And that's we did have a resignation on the planning commission, and so the applications today, um, will be moving forward, um. On, uh, the April sixth meeting, and we will, um. We'll be following up with each of them just to make sure that they want to keep their application on there, and then, uh, new application will be due on April third. So I do want to make you aware of that as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners questions? No?
Oh, oh, wait, there is one other thing, I'm sorry.
One more?
I almost forgot, man, um. We did hire a new community development director, and that's Mr. Louis Carriola back there, so, um, I. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson for the reminder, I I had planned on talking about that this morning, I got a little carried away. But, uh, we're really excited to have Louis on board as our community development director. Now, I want to answer any questions.
Commissioner Keller? Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, just real quickly, um, thank you Chairman Hockaday, uh. Those aerial photos were, like you said, pictures were a thousand words, it looked like out of an airplane. Um, is there a way that, um. I I hope hopefully we don't have stuff like this happen a bunch, but, um, even if the. If we could get some pictures of stuff like that, I don't know if we can use the police drone or not, but. But those pictures are, that really helped me see some area that you you just can't see from the road.
Yeah.
Um, and so that I want to thank whoever took those pictures, that was appreciated.
Absolutely, so some of those were taken from an airplane, um, by a citizen. Um, and then some of them were actually taken by Jay Flockus from the city of Yarrington. Uh, offered to help us, um, get some drone footage, so we really do appreciate that. We, um, do have a drone with the utilities department in Dayton as well, um, although I'm not sure if, uh. Yeah, we lost our pilot, so we'll be working on that, but, um. But yeah, no, those drone drone footage, um, videos have really helped us out, um. Really give us a good idea of where that water is, what we're looking at, um, it's helped us make decisions, so specific to Miller Lane. Uh, flying that area and seeing what's filled up and what hasn't, and we were thinking that we were going to have to close Miller Lane. Um, I, we still believe at some point we will this spring, um, just because that's, uh, how it has worked in the past. But, um, you know, the footage has really helped us make those decisions, so.
Any other questions? Okay, oh, Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for for all your hard work, you know, you and and Taylor. And the department heads and the employees, you know, we have the best county staff in the state, if not the country. And and thank you guys very much for your tireless work. And also, uh, good hire, Lewis, look looking forward to good things coming out of community development.
Something I didn't mean to to leave out is, uh, Ms. Holmes was on standby for, uh, shelters, so I had a couple of late night calls. With her, um, so specifically Saturday night, so I didn't want to, I didn't want to, didn't mean to leave her out, but. She was a part of the mix as well, and we were, uh, in close contact determining, you know, if that was necessary, how that would work, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Elected officials report, I see the sheriff stepped out. Come back, do we have any, I think that's about it. I will cross off item nine and go to ten, appointed officials reports. Who gets to come up and talk, oh, emergency management.
Uh, thank you for the record, Taylor Allison, Emergency Communications Manager for Lyon County, um. Couple of community groups, I just wanted to give a quick, not take too much time, but shout. We wouldn't be able to do what we do without them, the Sheriff's Office, VIPs. Um, in search and rescue, the VIPs have been manning the phones. Um, incredible group of folks, um, the search and rescue helped, um, in numerous ways, but. Um, filling sandbags, um. We got assistance through D E M from a volunteer group called Team Rubicon. As a group of volunteer veterans who came out. And we're filling sandbags here at Mason Town Hall, um, great group of folks. Many businesses have, um, supported in kind through donating equipment. Operators, um, materials to help us get those temporary repairs to roads and such, so. Uh, just wanted to give a thank you there, and then as, um, Mr. Haspin mentioned, we are working on the damage assessment component. Um, when you all, um, declared an emergency, we have thresholds to meet. Um, that would offer federal assistance potentially to Lyon County in supporting with this response. Lyon County's threshold is about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, but the state needs to meet not only Lyon County's, but all other counties in that state declaration, there's no doubt, uh, that we're going to hit that two hundred and sixty thousand. Uh, level for Lyon County, our initial threshold, um, just in the three or four assessments that we've already done in key areas. We're looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand, and and that does not include Dayton. Um, and several other areas, that was just in Smith Valley, so. We will likely hit, I just wanted to share with you all, but once we get a better idea of what our initial damage assessment. Is complete and what that full scope is.
Thank you, questions? Commissioner Hendricks?
No questions, but I did want to thank you, I got to watch you do some of your work and. Doing a great job, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Just did it all.
Yeah, Commissioner Keller?
I wanted to thank you for bringing, uh, the volunteers into that that we normally forget about, and they work really hard, and and thank you for bringing that forward, appreciate it.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Just echo what the county commissioners have said, thank you very much, and and to everybody, I mean, that is. It's, I mean, Lyon County isn't, it isn't unique to Lyon County flooding, you can see it all over the. U S, but it is more personal when it's in your backyard and and all of our crews, and and you've done a great job, so thank you very much.
And you were everywhere. Every 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 time I talked to Andrew, you were out running around the neighborhoods and checking on things and making sure that stuff was was working the way it was supposed to. So I really do appreciate that. Um, had a good group out there making sure that, uh, the county was being. Repaired and, uh, people were being notified, thank you. Elected officials, oh, I'm sorry, I meant appointed officials.
Uh, Louis Carriola, Community Development Director, uh, I don't really have a report for you yet, uh, but I did want to just say thank you. Uh, to the county manager and the other directors on my interview panel, I am sincerely appreciative of the faith faith they've placed in me. Um, the next few months, I'm I'm committed to reviewing our internal processes to see if there's opportunities. Uh, for efficiencies, and you know, my goal will be to bring the planning commission. Uh, and the Board of Commissioners clear and concise reports. Uh, for your judgments, I'm hoping the the public is also able to recognize a transparent process. Um, it's not going to happen overnight, and I do feel a little overwhelmed over these first eleven days. Uh, but Andrew and the other directors have been incredibly supportive, and I'm looking forward to continuing my service here for Lyon County. Thanks.
Any questions for? Louis?
I saw it at the planning commission online, and I think you did a great job there, so your first day doing that, so, good job.
Thank you, sir.
That, anybody else? Good to have you on board, Louis. Oh, boy, uh, that smile, okay, uh, Mr. Foley.
I was just enjoying the nice, uh, St. Patrick's Day time over there. Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record. Uh, just want to report to the board that we did have another meeting at the Fernley Justice Court regarding the expansion with the architect yesterday. We've come down to a, um. A design of what we need in that facility as we expand it. And unfortunately, the cost is going to be closer to five million dollars than the two point two million dollars that was allocated from the local funding. Not sure where, how we're going to fund that from, so. We will anxiously, all of us, be looking forward to the budgets that will be coming out in a couple of weeks soon, so that's my. The, our belated Christmas present over there, I'll give it to you in a couple of weeks.
Hmm.
That's all I know.
Yeah, thank you very little. Um, Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday, um, Mr. Foley, I'll just ask if we maybe reached out to the city of Fernley and see if they want to. Jump in on that or help with that in any form or fashion, I don't.
So I can have a discussion with them, um, their municipal court uses their their commission chamber, so I don't anticipate much, but we can definitely.
I just know in talking with the previous mayor, I don't know where our current mayors would stand on that, but it might be a shot, anytime we can work together to make a project. Less expensive, um, I'm all for saving some money, so it it's maybe a long shot, but. Wouldn't hurt to just find out. And I can chat with them as well.
That'd be great, all he can do is laugh.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah, um. Maybe not all he could do, he might laugh, but he may say, well, let's see what we can do, and so. I mean, there's both ends of that spectrum.
Absolutely, maybe I should have said the worst you can do is.
Yeah.
Problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller? Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Hendricks, anything, okay, um, thank you, Mr. Foley. Uh, Shayla, you're up.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services, I just want to put on your radar, April seventh. Uh, will be pinwheel planting, so coming in April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, where we bring awareness. We will be here on April sixth, your first meeting in April to do our annual presentation. But that following day is pinwheel planting, so we'll be getting that flyer out with the locations and exact times in each of our communities. But I wanted you guys to mark that now while you're planning your April month. That April seventh, sometime in the morning, generally between nine AM, ten AM, we'll be doing pinwheel planting in Fernley, Yarrington, Silver Springs, and Dayton.
Thank you, any questions? Oh, Commissioner Jacobson?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Hockday, if, um. And, um, if you have a flyer or something, I can get that to some of the, uh, leadership groups in Fernley, and they may. Dive in and help on that.
Absolutely, we're finalizing a location, so the flyer's not a hundred percent yet, I anticipate we'll be releasing it sometime this afternoon.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? I don't see anybody else lined up, so we'll go on to number eleven, Advisory Board Reports. And do we have any update on? That a report only? There was a letter transmittal. Want me to read that into the record, or just, okay? Anybody to, uh? Right?
Hi, Ralph Nguyen, Dayton, uh, the advisory board chair. I just want to give a summary, uh, from our, excuse me, our last meeting, um, big concerns over. Um, a new stop sign on Dayton Valley Road and the lakes. That has been ignored way too often because people don't expect it to be there. We wanted to see stop that had painted on there. We also had a citizens' letter, um, excuse me. About, um, the homeless situation, there's camps down along the river. That are kind of getting out of control. And the last thing we had to deal with was kind of a technical issue, the, uh. Software hadn't been updated on our PC to do the Zoom meeting, which we use for everything, and so we. Barely got it, I mean, six fifty eight, did we get it figured out how to do a workaround? Before we had to cancel, so. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Just just a comment, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, appreciate your 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 work, your service on the citizens advisory board, and, um. That stop ahead has been planned to be painted there, it's just, we got to wait till the weather, it's kind of hard to paint right now.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you. Consent agenda action be taken on all items. Oh, what's that? Oh, okay. Yeah, Mr. Jones, I. Didn't see you wandering up.
Mark Jones, Smith Valley, uh, CID, uh, Vice Chair. Uh, we moved our meetings temporarily up to the fire department because we're trying to get into the twenty first century with Zoom. And, uh, we've been, David's donated a lot of stuff for us to get it going at our other location, but. Right now, it's not a priority, so, but I want to thank this, uh, Chair's not here, but, uh, he had his commander. We had the, uh, fire chief, everybody was there at the meeting, giving input, which is actually some very good input. I've been trying to push the fire department to become some full-time people, I realized they said that about half their staff would quit. If we went full-time, so we'll just table that, table that notion for a while. Uh, one of the things that they, that people were concerned about is we're coming up with these proposals to review land splits and stuff like that. Without any input from the, uh, commission, planning commission. So we would like to, uh, request that we get input attached to those, so we'll have an idea better of learning what we shouldn't, shouldn't comment on. We also, um. I've been trying to get painting reflector ships on Lower Colony. And it'll save the, it'll save the state a lot of money because they keep replacing barriers down there, because, you know, whiteout, you can't even see the thing. We had a head-on collision there last week with postal mail delivery. One of the things we've been, uh. Talking about possibly changing on meeting night, uh, we'll meet with Andrew and see if we can do that, instead of having this flooding first, third, second, third, you know. People that have real lives and real organizational license, very hard to have them swinging through a non-set meeting date. And so recall that we have to, we'll discuss with you because we don't know what the regulations are, how we get that changed. Uh, last thing I'd like to request is that the board possibly consider giving a letter of. Uh, appreciation to the seven seven five rescue group. That's been in the mountains pulling off a ton of people in Lyon County off roads, Mason Valley is just an example. They they're just a group out there that volunteer, uh, they're a good size group. And they just work for donations, they don't charge people to pull them off there. So I think it might be a nice little gesture just to give them poodles because the sheriff department's been saying how much these people have really been helping search and rescue, so. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Uh. I I do know that, uh, Smith Valley Advisory Board meets the first Wednesday of every month, but it's always the first Wednesday after the first Tuesday. If there's no Tuesday, then it's the basically the second Wednesday. Does get confusing at times, but, yeah, yeah, right, but, yeah, first first Wednesday after the first Tuesday. I don't see any other. Okay, get my head up here and look, I don't see anybody else wandering up. Though I will go ahead and go down to the consent agenda action be taken on. Though I will go ahead and go down to the consent agenda. Action be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board. County Commissioners with one action and without any extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So. Anything that I need from the commissioners? Anything from the community? Now see anything anywhere. So do I have a motion, man, on the consent agenda?
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda items twelve A through sixteen C.
Okay. And do I have a second?
I'd kind of like to pull thirteen A, the minutes, because there was something in there that I kind of wanted. Wrote it on record.
Okay.
Mister Chair, I will amend my motion to approve the consent agenda items twelve A through sixteen C minus item thirteen A.
Hey, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, so we have the amended uh motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Jacobson.
Keller.
Or Keller? Okay. And. All those in favor of that say, oh, comment on that. Comment on. All right. After this, okay. Any public comment?
None on Zoom.
Nothing anywhere, then let's go ahead and uh. Take a vote on that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We've got five oh. And we'll go to thirteen A. That was yours, Commissioner Hendricks.
On in the minutes on page ten of twenty-one, the last paragraph talks about um. The drainage schedule for the ditches and so they will have a slip that's actually a SWPP. And I also, they did say on record that they would be maintaining it twice a year, and I want that to be reflected in the minutes. SWPP. I mean, I want it reflected that they did state on record that they would maintain the drainage twice a year.
So we have a correction just a minute.
Uh the developer.
Okay. With that correction, then you're okay with thirteen A?
I am.
All right. Do you want to make a motion to accept that as corrected?
I'll make a motion that we accept uh approve the March second, twenty-twenty-three minutes as amended.
Okay, I don't think there's any other comments on that amended. No comments from, and we got a second, so. Yeah. No other comments from the board, no other comments from the public. I don't see anything on the Zoom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Who was the second on that? Who that was? Okay, Commissioner Henderson was the second. Commissioner Hendricks was, okay. Got it. Yes.
Um, thank you, sir. Before we move on, can we just take a about a two-minute break?
Oh, absolutely. We'll take a five-minute break.
All right, thank you, sir.
You bet. Five minutes. Hey, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order at eleven oh two. And we're going to move on to uh. Item seventeen A, if I'm not mistaken. For possible action, appoint a member to the Planning Commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. And I believe I saw a late input for um. Uh Betty Retzer.
She was true.
Withdrawing, so I'm just gonna bring that up right now and uh. Um Ms. Lopez.
Um I believe that you. Mentioned that Betty Retzer did pull her application for the record. And also we did have, um, just to clarify, I wanted to make sure everyone was under the same understanding. Um. We had this uh opening since we had Commissioner Tommy Hendricks move up to the Board of County Commissioner. And then we also had Greg Lawson um send in his um resignation, so we will be reaching out to um. Any of the other applicants who after today are wishing for their application forward after today's appointment. Um to see if they want to move it to the April um sixth meeting. So if you guys had any other questions for me.
Any other questions?
And I just wanted to check to see if we had anyone in chambers or online for any of the applicants here, just in case you guys had any questions for them. I'm not sure if they recognize any.
So one in chambers, um. Two in chambers? Okay, two?
I see some online as well, Chairman Hockaday.
Okay. So we do have them here and online. Yeah, approved. So I just wondered if anybody, any commissioners had any comments before we get moving on here?
Um I I don't comment in general, if if I may.
Okay, yeah.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. I just want us to be cognizant. Yeah, and I um. It'd actually be nice to have a list of who is on the planning commission now and where where they're, what area of the county they live in. Yeah, and and also I think for the next meeting, I'm. Probably want just a summary of the items that come before the planning commission by by geography. So um I I think that members of the planning commission should be, should represent more of the the areas of the county where development is occurring.
I couldn't give you a quick synopsis, like around to my office.
So for the next meeting.
For the next?
Yeah.
Any other, Commissioner Jacobson?
Um just uh kind of piggyback off that. I I agree. I believe our last appointment came from the Smith Valley area. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um and at that time. It was stated that uh balance and representation from all areas of Lion County. And I would just like us to keep that in mind. Um. I don't know that we have any from the Fernley area. I know they have their own city planning commission. Um. But uh. I think with public lands and and going and all this stuff and working together, I I do think that the Fernley. Area is probably underrepresented um. On on the planning commission. So, thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Commissioner Keller. Do you have any comment?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Wes on on uh. Looking at actually where development is in Lion County that is. Actually done by Lion County, like like uh. Commissioner Jacobson said that the city of certainly has their own sort of city of Harrington. Would like to keep them stretched within, right now it seems like the fifty corridor is where it's. Where the growth is, and I'd like to keep in that area.
Commissioner Hendricks?
I agree with that.
Okay. And of course, and. We can say the fifty corridor is where most of the development is occurring, but we do have decisions from the south end of the county also, so. Uh we do, we do need to make sure we have some representation to make some decisions down there for subdivisions and things such as that. Um maintaining the egg environment. So um. Do we, as as a board, do we want to hear from some of the applicants or should go ahead and make an appointment here? It's up to you.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
At your discretion, Mister.
I am uh I'm going to make. Um, or I should ask, is it's any public comment about our planning commission? So I was going to make a motion to appoint um. Um Mister Ralph Ewing. To the Planning Commission with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second that.
So, nice. Just write that down. So got my motion and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. Uh all those in favor? The aye. Aye. Anybody opposed?
Nay.
So we have four one with uh opposition by Commissioner Jacobson. Commissioner Ewing, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the commission for the opportunity to serve the the county and the people who live in it. I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you. Thank you.
First now we got to replace him on the Dayton Valley.
Okay.
That's all right.
So we'll move on to seventeen B. For possible action, appoint Jeff Miller as the Sheriff's Representative to the nine-one-one Surcharge Committee with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. I, any problem with that, Commissioner comments? No comments? Public comment?
Um Aaron Lopez, for the record, I just wanted to just state for the record that that was a recommendation given us from the um. Sheriff folks, if they had a vacancy with stopping.
Okay. So if there's no further comments, uh do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move that we appoint Jeff Miller as the Sheriff's Representation to the nine-eleven Surcharge Committee with term expired December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
I have a second.
Second.
It was Commissioner Jacobson was the second. My my left ear isn't working, probably because my left shoulder doesn't work either. Yeah. All right. So I have the uh. Motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So five oh on that. And now we're going to move on to utilities, eighteen A for information only. We have projects update from utilities engineer for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three, Kishora Panda. New Utilities Department. Uh yes, sir, go ahead.
Your morning chair, for the record, Kisho Panda, Utilities Engineer. Um, I'd like to give the report on the Utilities Department project since we last reported in January. So this is a summary of all the projects that are now in different pages. Um, as you can see, there are four projects uh that are in the pre-design or planning stage. Um out of those four, number one, which is Highway Fifty-two replacement project. Is a capital project, but number two, three, and four, they are engineering studies and evaluation kind of projects. We do not have any project that are in the design phase right now. Um. We moved two projects. That are in the design phase in the last January. With the project on the construction as we move them from the design phase to the construction phase. So right now, we have four projects under construction. As I said, number one and two, which is a. Sewer replacement project. Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Projects, they are under full phase of construction. We just moved the Ten Mile Hill Tank Water Project. And rolling a wastewater treatment facility for expansion to construction. So in the next slides, I'll give some additional details on each project. This is Highway Fifty, Dayton Valley Roads, your replacement project phase two. To some of our new uh board members, maybe I can give you a little bit objective of this project. Um, this is phase two of the sewer replacement project that we have near the Dayton Valley Road and Highway Fifty corridor. Uh the blue line is basically the portion that we completed in twenty-twenty-one. Uh the red line is the line that we are now. Pursuing to replace in the near future. So out of that, um the the easement is kind of. We have, we have been working for last few months. To to acquire this easement on two property owners. One is the Sinclair Gas Station on the left. Uh of the Dayton Valley Road as you're looking north. And on the right side, we have another property owner that we need to get the easement in order to replace this pipeline. As of that, we are fortunate to get a permanent easement from Sinclair Gas Station. And we are working with the other property owner, which is Sabia's Properties. Um, we are hoping that in the near next one month or so, we'll be able to. Achieve a both permanent and temporary easement of this construction. Um, this project is a development of a sewer model that basically going to help. Our operation of waste water facilities, mostly the collection system. We started this project in April of last year. Uh there is uh four months of flow monitoring involved, which we completed in September of last year. Uh, we are hoping to get the model as well as the report from the engineer by end of this month. And after completion of this one-of-a-kind or first time in the utility department. It is going to help to the operation department. To manage the operation as well as to planning process. Next one. Next project is Simba Spring General Improvement District Affluent Disposal Preliminary Engineering Report. From this plant, the affluent goes to a uh landscape. Uh irrigation purpose for the affluent disposal. Which has been found not sustainable because there is no alternative source or place to. Dispose this affluent in case we have an issue with the farm. So the scope of the project is basically engineering evaluation of different alternatives that we can think about to dispose this affluent from this plant. That includes an evaluation of a rapid infiltration. So we are in discussion with one property owner so that we can get access to this property to do some geotechnical investigation. For a possible uh rapid infiltration basin for the affluent disposal. Next one. Next project is another engineering study, uh which is sit camp dam geotechnical assessment. Few months back, uh Department of Water Resources identified this dam as a hazard dam. We initiated this study, um. A preliminary geotech assessment report was submitted uh back in August of twenty-twenty-two. Um, there is a meeting to 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 set out the plan for the next phase uh done in September. I think we have not progressed much on this project and the next phase is basically to talk to the state. And to to find out what are the actions we need to take to either decertify or do some very heavy distance work for the dam to. To um take that um designation as a hazard dam. Next one. Um, this project is a sewer replacement to replacement, it is on the Dayton Valley Road next to the Gulf Coast. Um, the construction began in May of twenty-twenty-two. Um, obviously, the the. Intro, the project was interrupted in October due to some material supply and shipping delays. Um, within a month, we started, uh we started the project construction in November. Board approved the time extension for this project in uh up to July of this year. However, last month, January and February, with the kind of unprecedented and uh. There was almost a month of delay. Uh we are seeing in the project construction. However, we have not heard anything from the contractor for any time extension for this project, but it may be likely coming. Uh if we cannot meet the July first deadline. So. It is due to the weather. I think both of our projects are kind of getting bigger into the ground so much moist. And non-accessibility of the humans for constructions and purposes. Next one is Aspen Creek. Next one is Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin. This is a facility that we provide the full capacity as when this goes out for our rolling a plant, that plans. This construction began in uh um, October of last year. Construction was very satisfactory. Um, unfortunately, the planned activities in January, February was interrupted due almost a month. Um, as for the contract, this project is supposed to be done by May of this year. But uh today uh we are bringing a change order to extend the project time that we are going to present next uh to extend the time of completion to July with final completion to August of the year. Next one, please. This project, as I said, it was in the design phase. We moved to the construction page. We opened this project for bidding. Um, uh, the recommendation came uh from the engineers, the board awarded the contract to Aspen developers uh on February second board meeting. Right now, the contract is being executed. Uh, expected notice to proceed for construction is uh June of this year with a seven month completion. We are planning to wrap up this project by end of this year. Next one, please. Um, rolling it with water treatment facility phase for expansion. This is a plant expansion project that will take the plant capacity from one million gallons per day to one point four million gallons per day with approximately twenty years of planning horizon. The project was going to bid on January ninth. Uh, bid was open on February twenty eighth. We got two bids. Uh, those are kind of within five percent of engineers estimate. That was a good news. Uh, bid number one and two, they're pretty close within three hundred thousand dollar difference. Um, the recommendation however came for bid number two, which is not the lowest bidder. So we received a bid protest from bidder number one. So right now at this point, we are we are addressing that bid protest. Um, even if you're planning for April sixth board meeting to bring the recommended um contract to board's consideration, there may be likely a delay due to the big protest from bidder number one. Construction will be about uh twenty four months. Uh, we have plan right now to start the construction in June at the summer. Um, and finish this project by May of twenty twenty five. Um, that's all I got. If you have any questions, I'll just have the answer.
All right, questions? Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, uh Chairman Hockaday. You said the rolling a had two bidders. Um, are you able to speak on who those two bidders were?
Um, we we are not ready yet. We've been to the board after we go through the bid protest. We discuss in the board all these things, but I don't know. Those two bidders, one is RDC. Um, the other one is KG Waters.
Okay, I just and then um, do we consider possible lawsuits against one or the other as as reason when the bids, you said the bids are fairly close?
Between three hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it's close enough that we could award it to either one.
Well, the engineers recommendation that came from Dow is based on the qualification that we are looking right now. Um, we are in discussion with DA's office and uh we'll go through those big topics. But the qualification is the main criteria of this politician at this point.
All right, thank you, sir.
Commissioner question, Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. It's kind of good to see you. Um, I'm pleased that progress is continuing on the um the easement for the Dayton Silver Line because that is the only route that's acceptable to 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 me anyway to use. So I appreciate your efforts on that.
No questions.
No, no questions for me. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to eighteen B uh for possible action proved change order number one for the Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin and twelve inch affluent main project with aims construction to extend the contract duration by a hundred and twenty one days due to material procurement delays associated with American iron and steel available products. And Mister Burketa.
Uh Chairman Hockaday, Commissioner David McKenna for the record. So um again, we were having a hard time getting products. Uh, a lot of the hang up goes with these American iron and steel. It's a requirement of our loan that we meet this specific requirement. So um, we were at the mercy of the suppliers on this. So this request is to extend it. We are hopeful that these products will come in in April. Uh, but just like we said with our other contract extension, sometimes two weeks out, we get an email that says we still don't have that part. So this is our best information that we know as of date to extend this for another hundred and twenty one days.
Okay. Questions? Comments?
Just comment, Mister Chair, if I if I may. Uh, thank you, Mister Burketa. You know how much I love change orders? This one's okay though, because that costs anything. So we're good on that.
And so just one comment on that too. And there is, this is a no change cost order and we're in and I got to give kudos to the development community because they have other projects to work on too. So you know, there's always that risk when you extend a contract that they have another project to go to. So there could be something associated with it, but we've worked it out with these contractors so far. And at this time, there's no change order or there's no cost associated.
And that was my concern too, is that when you start delaying and they've got to you know, move people different places and bring them back and equipment movement and things such as that, then you've always got to face that possibility of change order number two. So appreciate that. Um, there aren't any other questions, any public comment? All right, and I'll look for a motion for eighteen B.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve change order number one for the Austin Creek Rapid Infiltration Basin and twelve inch affluent main project with aims construction to extend the contract duration by one hundred and twenty one days to due to material procurement delays associated with the American iron and still availability of products.
Grab a second. I'll second. Oh, okay. Great. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got five zero on that and we'll move on. Thank you very much. Oh, um, yeah, Commissioner Henderson uh was the um, motion and Commissioner Hendricks was the second. Sorry about that. Nineteen A County Manager for possible action approved task order C between Lyon County Nevada and Armstrong Consultants Incorporated, providing for professional engineering services for the Silver Springs Airport for pavement maintenance of runway six and twenty four and taxiway A in the amount of seventy three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. So we have the Silver Springs Airport pavement maintenance task order C.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. Yeah, so this is um in support of the annual grant that we apply for for the maintenance on the um Silver Springs Airport as part of our um capital improvement plan, airport capital improvement plan. Um, we uh the consultant on this one, um, the way it works, um, if we don't get that grant, then we don't get get paid. So this is for the engineering services on it. So um basically, we have to have the the funding to do the project first. So I just want to provide some clarification there. Something we do every.
Okay, questions?
Six comment.
Oh, comment from Commissioner.
Sure, just want to make make sure that the commission is aware of that, that even when we get this grant, there is still a five percent county man still will be required.
Correct. Yeah.
But but as as we discussed, you know, I'll spend five dollars to get ninety five just about any day of the week.
Exactly.
Okay, any other commissioner comments? Questions? Public comment? Anything on Zoom? Didn't look like it. Nothing in the room. So do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve task order C between Lyon County Nevada and Armstrong Consultants Incorporated, providing for professional engineering services for the Silver Springs Airport for pavement maintenance of runway six twenty four and taxiway A in the amount of seventy three thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So five oh on the vote. Move on to nineteen B. For possible action approved letters of support on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for Community Project Funding Requests. We've got five requests. And I'll go off to uh County Manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Again, I'm I'm just happy to answer any questions. These are for the funding requests that we're going to be submitting to um our congressional delegation tomorrow. So.
Order group?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate the letters uh in prepared and I guess I'll be signing all of them.
But.
Okay, certainly don't have a problem requesting money from the feds. Any commissioner comments?
Just.
Commissioner.
Um, yeah, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. It was some of this stemming from our recent uh marriage, if you will, with our consulting group from back in DC or is?
All of them, yeah.
All right. That's what I figured. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I just want to thank you and your staff for the quick work that you guys did on this. I know we're up against tight deadlines and not like you guys have anything else you've been having to deal with lately, like rain or snow or floods. So anyway, thank you, because this is this is important that we get these in because we do need more federal dollars coming to Lyon County. So I I appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks, any?
Yeah, I appreciate. I think last week I signed what nine of them uh just just happened to be coming in. So we we were able to get those out, I believe it was by Thursday and uh I was just so I said, I'm I'm happy to see they immediately turned around and started helping us request money. So uh more than happy to make the drive in to get get requests for money for the county. So with that, uh, any public comment?
And seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the letters.
Make a motion to approve the letters of support on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for the Community Project Funding Request as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh on that. And item twenty twenty A for possible action approved contract with bid for assets for five years for online county tax sale auction and allow the clerk treasurer to sign the contract. And I think we all had a um a couple of minor changes. And so we got a late backup on twenty eighth. Um, Ms. Limburg, go ahead.
Ms. Limburg, for the record, Lyon County clerk treasurer. Um, in reviewing our processes and and wanting to upgrade and and make the sales more successful, um, I reached out to um all the other treasurers throughout the county because we have some new ones, some older ones. And um thirteen out of the seventeen counties I talked to are all using bid for assets. Um, and they all went to this process due to the 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 great success they've had. Um, bid for assets is a a company, a no what they call a no pay company for county. There's no fees to us and they take care of all the auction. Um, and what they're they do is right now we only advertise in the local newspaper what's required by NRS. This company actually advertises nationwide. They have a base of eight hundred and fifty thousand registered bidders that bid on property within um with for their company. Thirteen thousand of those are in Nevada. Um, they send out four hundred and fifty emails weekly trying to get bidders to come to the sales. Um, so the marketing side of it was incredible, uh, an incredible resource from from my views. Um, we also have that day in the office. From what I understand, I've never lived through one is pretty chaotic. They um, you know, trying to Nikki usually handled, you know, the previous treasurer handled the auction herself and they had to verify funds. They had to collect the money. They had to verify vesting, get the information for the deeds, everything. This company does all of that for us at no charge. The bidders get charged ten percent to cover the fees for this. Um, and I just had a couple of things I really wanted to point out. My county just did a sale, a small sale of properties that um didn't sell in previous auctions um that were kind of, you know, no one was interested. They put them on bid for assets. They got a hundred percent sale all over asking. So and I'm I'm not sure I we it after one year of these bit, these uh properties that sell over bid, after one year, that excess money can be taken into the general fund to fund the county. So um my goal was to try to, you know, get the most for every property even above our taxes due on them. Um, the Nye County had uh three hundred and forty two bidders from twenty one states and they made one point eight million on their first off online auction. So I thought that was pretty interesting to share. Um, and then I uh the treasurer in Elko County also, I I spoke to her because she's been in her position for quite a few years and has a lot of knowledge to share with me. And she said, um, in over the years, they made around three hundred and fifty thousand um each year on their auctions. Since she went to bid for assets, the last two auctions, she made one point two and one point one million on her tax sale options. So um I'm looking at entering into a contract, the late backup basically just clarified because I, you know, I, this is my first time. I didn't want to get locked in um to any long term contracts until we see some successes. So I had them update the paragraph that you know, if we're not happy with this first year auction, that we can cancel at that time. Um, but just the assets and the the time savings and the ability to advertise and get more bidders in for auctions more than sells this for me. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question.
So the the cost of this is on the buyer, not on the county, correct?
Nope, there's no.
So we're getting free labor?
And it's it sets it out in the contract clearly that it's no cost to the county. If I can cancel a property, the date for the sale at no charge. If someone pays it current.
Commissioner Henderson, any comments? No. Mister Jacobson, Commissioner Keller?
I I do have a comment. I I've really been amazed at your initiative. I mean, you have brought so many things to the commission that are changes and increases in our income and these activities that you're looking into that save us money and and help us out in the long run. So I really appreciate that you've done a a great job. And I think the counties, the county should be very happy.
Really enjoyed it. I'm honored honored to hold this position. I've I've really been enjoying it. It's it's been fun.
Thank you. Any public comment? Okay.
None on Zoom.
With nothing else going on on twenty A, I will uh request a motion. Not a motion, yeah, as I can say, if not, I'm doing it.
Mister Mister Chair, I I move that we approve the uh wait a minute, I'm reading the wrong thing. I I I move that we approved the contract with bid for assets for five years for online county tax sale auction and allow the clerk treasurer to sign the contract.
Second.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, just to point a clerk, do we need to put in the motion that we have a year of satisfaction or?
It is in the contract in the second, that the latest decade. They modified that.
I just curious because we approved it for five years. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Modifying that to read up to up to five years.
Yeah.
I'll 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 motion that way.
Okay.
For up to five years.
Okay, and uh, Cam, you still?
Yep.
Okay. So we do have the uh updated or um changed motion and the second stands for that change. So no other comments? I will go ahead and ask for a vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thank you, Stacy. All right, we already done twenty one A. So uh we're at twenty two agenda requests. Um, let's start out with Commissioner Keller.
Uh, I'll have one later, but I want to talk to the County Manager before I request it. Uh, but I do. I'll have one later, but I want to talk to the county manager before I request it, but I do. Realize that we had some mercy management recognize some people from. In the volunteer groups and I'd like them to be formally recognized when this is all done, just to bring them up forward and. Recognize the volunteers.
Okay, other agenda requests, Commissioner Henderson?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, it's not really, well, it is an agenda request, the next agenda when we have the. Fill the second vacancy on the planning commission, I would like just a synopsis of. The geographic areas of, of the projects that come before the planning commission, just to give us a rough idea. That's all.
Requests, Commissioner?
No requests right now.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Yeah, I would just, when we have these people put in for the planning commission, that we actually give them an opportunity to speak. Here to the commission, I, it, it absolutely flabbergasted me that we, we don't let them, so. I would ask for that, and then I also wrote down the same thing that Commissioner Keller had had Chairman Hockaday that. We recognize some of these groups, starting with the seven seven five search and rescue, maybe we, we span them out, I. In paying attention to the. To who brought that up, sounds like they're a rather large organization and they may bring a bunch of people, so we may want to spread some of that out. Just due to space or whatnot, but I am all for recognizing all the people that have helped during these weather events and. And even not just the volunteer groups, but even our own staff. So. Thank you.
Okay. And I have a couple of agenda requests kind of that are in the works and will be eventually placed on the agenda. So that takes care of twenty two, twenty three commissioner comments, any further comments, Commissioner Hendricks? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to take a, a personal privilege and. Give my, my sympathy and my congratulations to my wife on her wedding anniversary, today's our anniversary. And I'll be taking her out to dinner tonight once she gets out of jail.
Working. Later, yes, okay, we, we all knew that, that the general public information, go down to Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday, knowing Commissioner Henderson is probably Jack in the Box or where are you going to?
I, I was gonna take her to help load food boxes, that seems to work.
Any other comments? Alright, I don't believe we have a closed session today, the district attorney's not here. So moving right along, public participation is to be the last one for the day, no action, we take not any item until it's properly agendaized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, act, action item, but before the board takes any action. Though I'm looking for a last public comment for the day. I don't think we have any on the board, we don't have any in the chambers, so we are going to go to twenty six and adjourn at eleven forty one.